Order and first item on the agenda is the roll call.
Here.
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 The first item on the agenda is the Big Wood Event Center Marketing Plan by Doug Gray and Holly Lee from Leighton Media, or Leighton Media.
Good morning. I'm going to give you a little bit of background. You'll see in their presentation, they've got two distinct brands. They've got Leighton Media, which they propose for free work for the use of the event center. So it's a trade platform. The second phase is Leighton Engage, and that's Holly's expertise, and she will present sort of that above and beyond that we would like some feedback from the council so the Tax Levy Committee knows whether or not to include it in the 2025 budget. And Bill suggested maybe we even look at starting sooner if that's something you're interested in. So I will turn it over to the Leighton team.
Good morning. Thank you for taking time to meet with us this morning. I just wanted to follow up Gene's comments in regard to how we got to this point. Leighton's mission is to serve, connect, and celebrate our communities. And one of the ways that we do that is through event marketing and trying to bring unique events and activities to our community that we can kind of hang our hat on. Simultaneously, we obviously saw that the city had to take back over the, or take over the daily operation of the Big Wood Event Center. And so you found yourself in a position where you had to run a business that unfortunately was decimated by COVID. And so we recognized that. And specifically, I thought, you know, I think there's an opportunity for us to help one another here whereby we can offer our marketing services to help, you know, revitalize the bookings for weddings and meeting space. And we in turn can use the event space to bring more activity to the community, bring more attention and positive things that are going on. So essentially, what we're talking about, as Gene mentioned, is a simple barter for advertising and marketing services. And so as we look at what we're trying to accomplish, we want to position the Big Wood as the premier indoor event space. And we're going to use various platforms, including our broadcast radio stations, local digital pre-roll video that would appear on, we have streaming platforms for all of our stations. So before individuals can log on and listen to the stream or watch the stream of the sports, that pre-roll will play. Online contesting, we can talk about that if you have any more questions, but that essentially is a lead generation tool to specifically reach out to people that have an interest in renting space for whether it be a wedding or a business meeting. Database marketing from the city's standpoint, I think that's something we've been eliminating as a possibility. But then lastly, Leighton Engage, which Holly will talk about in a few moments. So that essentially is what we would provide in exchange for the meeting space. What we're trying to do here, and I've spent just a second on this slide, is there's a lot of competition for meeting space. And people have gotten out of the habit, particularly for business meetings, of meeting in person. There's a lot more online meeting. And so we find ourselves over on the left side of this graph where we need to re-inform and re-educate and build top-of-mind awareness for the Big Wood Event Center and the fact that it's available and the amenities that it provides that are unique that you can't get through an online experience. So what we want to do is take people through that journey so that we can get more advocates who will help spread the word about the fact that this is the place that you want to meet. This is a little more in-depth detail as to some of the things we looked at before, radio stations on which the campaign would air, the contests in an effort to generate more leads, and also to do some event marketing at some of the events we host, such as the Craft Beer Tour. That age group is also the same age group that obviously is going to be looking for wedding rental space, so that could be a good fit. And then the pre-roll video, as I mentioned, and where that would air. So a little summary of the campaign itself on the radio stations, although we need to take a lot of time on that particular aspect of it. Pre-roll video, again, kind of explains that that is on the platforms that people log in to listen to for content. The interactive contesting, which is the lead generation tool. And then lastly, and I think this is what I'm most excited about, is some of the things that we are doing or planning on doing, some things we've already done. This spring, we hosted our Celebrate Aging event at the Big Wood Event Center in April, and we have plans to do that again next year. We've made the decision to move the Craft Beer Tour, we want to move the Craft Beer Tour back to the Big Wood Event Center from the location we've had the last three years, which was the Kirk Wright. We feel like we've gambled enough with the weather and some infections. We've also talked about, we wanted to host some of our programming and sales events here in Fergus Falls, specifically where we bring all of our management team from all of our markets, as well as other broadcast companies. And we bring them in for training. Currently, we do that in Alexandria and Minneapolis. So that would be one potential use that I think would really help put our community on display. We're hosting in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce a meet the candidates event on September 23rd and 24th. We would like to host things like our Optical Power Company, Weather Spotter Network meetings out there. We intend to do a home show in 2025, and we would hope that that would be at the Big Wood. And then finally, coming up in October of this year, we have scheduled a second year in a row. Chuck Mefford, a marketing consultant, is coming into the market to put on a seminar for local business owners. And so we would use the Big Wood there as well. So that's just a few of the things. That's not necessarily set in stone. We have a lot of other ideas, and so again, subject to change. And then I'll turn it over to Holly, and she can talk a little bit about Leighton Engage.
All right. Thank you. So one thing about me is I'm the side you're going to have to pay for. So that's why I'm here today, to try to explain to you why we think it's a good idea to get into the budget for next year. Unfortunately, we don't own the inventory in which we would be advertising for you, and that's why we can't do the trade for the Leighton Engage portion. But I want to tell you why it's effective and how I feel it will work to benefit the Big Wood. So what we are proposing is to do a 20-mile radius as far as targeting. So what's nice about digital marketing is we can set a radius that we want to. We can also add to this, subtract to this. If there's different opportunities in different communities that don't have as much event space, we can expand and be really strategic and targeted with all of our digital marketing efforts. So the first thing that we are recommending is display. So you will recognize these ads as when you are going, let's say, you are going to go and decide to put something on the grill tonight, you're going to go and research a recipe, you're going to Google it, end up on tasteofhome.com, and then you're going to see an ad. There's going to be ad spaces available. The reason those websites are free to use is because they sell ad space, and then we can purchase that for you. So Leighton Engage is able to purchase ad space on different websites other than our own. So ESPN.com, CNN.com, Fox News, The Weather Bug, The Weather Channel, these are just some of the ones that we see in our reporting. And so a display ad is much like a billboard that you're going to see as you're, you know, driving on 94. But what's nice about it is people are able to click on it, and it can be targeted. So if we are looking to advertise a wedding venue, let's make sure that we get in front of a targeted audience of people who are searching for that, or who would be in the age demographic, or the age demographic of an influencer, perhaps a parent is, you know, helping to foot the bill for their child. Let's make sure to get in front of that targeted group. The same thing for the meeting space. Let's get in front of administrative assistants or people who are making decisions on where those meetings should take place. So that's really the benefit of digital marketing, is we are able to get in front of a targeted audience of people with a specific message that's relevant for them. Not sure if anybody has ever grabbed their spouse's phone, and all of the ads look much different. It's because they're searching for different things. And so if I grab my husband's phone, I might see some golf ads, and mine is probably clothes. So what's nice about display is if we think about what Doug showed with the customer journey display is really making people aware of your brand. And then this next tactic that I'm proposing is search engine marketing. These are the Google ads. When you go in your search for something, these are the ads that show up as sponsored on the top of your search results, because we want to make people aware of you. And then once they're at that decision-making phase, and they're searching for office space or some kind of wedding or event venue, we want you to show up on the top of those results. And so that's where search engine marketing comes in, and it helps at the end of that customer journey when people are making the decision. Back in the day, this would be Yellow Pages. This would be buying your half-page ad in the Yellow Pages. But now it is buying that ad at the top of the search results. And so with this, it can also be specifically targeted on what people are searching for, excuse me. So if they're searching for wedding venue, office space, event space, all of those things would be keywords that we would purchase so that you're showing up in the relevant searches. These are a couple of just statistics on the reason that we use search engine marketing. It's very much a faucet. We say, once you turn it on, you're going to get leads. Once you turn it off, the leads are absolutely going to slow down, because it really is at that decision-making phase where people can click and then go to your website and research more. And we worked with the team here, Gene and her team, to make some updates to the website. So we feel that we're in a good place to have a nice foundation for people to visit your website and find the information that they are looking for. Do you have anything to say on this?
Well, obviously, we want to be able to measure and determine how successful we are. And so these are some of the metrics that we would want to monitor. Obviously, website traffic, as we continue to build awareness, we should see an increase in visits there. Leads, lead generation, the proof is in what we're able to turn out. And then obviously, increased number of requests for bid or an estimate to rent a room would also be another key metric that indeed activity is increasing. And of course, word of mouth. You know, you'll begin to hear people talking about the fact that, hey, we're hearing about the Big Wood. And then ultimately, it's the bottom line, right? Year over year, sales growth, what does it look like? And so those are the things that we would monitor and ahead of time determine how much growth do we expect to see to make this successful in your estimation. So you have anything else to add, Holly?
Yeah, I just, I just have one little thing to talk about as far as why Leighton Engage. I like to be really transparent with people and say that there's a lot of businesses out there that also sell digital marketing. So why should you select the Leighton Engage over somebody else? Our main differentiator is really our reporting and our relationships and our strategy. We don't come in and just sell something off of a one-pager and be like, well, what do you want to buy? We talk with you about what your goals are, and we make sure that all of our recommendations are custom to what's going to help you guys move the needle. And then we also meet with you every six to eight weeks, and we talk to you about what's been happening. A lot of people will give you access to a fancy dashboard that's hard to understand. And so we actually go through with you and explain what those numbers mean. And then we track all of those things that Doug was referring to. Let's track how many leads, how many bids are you putting out? And let's track those month over month. So then year over year, we can see what our growth has been.
Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Laura?
Quick question on reporting. How frequent are you giving those reports?
Typically, we do every six weeks. We set a standing meeting every six weeks.
Scott?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. On the reporting related to this, it seems like you would be, depending on Gene or people at Big Wood, to actually fill in the blanks for part of, or if not a lot of, your stuff, to know, you know, what the results have been. How would you know if we've written a proposal? Or how would you know if there's, you know, so I've been wondering to what degree there is a responsibility on the city staff or the Big Wood staff to make this really work and to make it useful information.
Yeah. Yeah, great question. So it really is up to you about the things that you want to track and how in-depth that you want to get it. We have some partners who just want to hear from us and to see what we're seeing and what kind of movement we're seeing. There are other people who are more involved. For example, for like, we have a recruitment client in Alexandria, and they do take the time to gather the metrics and take a look at how many applications that they have had month over month, how many, you know, people have actually accepted a position, how many offers they have put out there. And yes, that does take time, but I feel that the value is worth the investment. But it really depends on you. We don't have to report on those things. If you don't want to, we'll still bring our data and what we're seeing and the movement we're seeing. We have KPIs that we report on, so we know if it's successful from our end. It just helps it become more kind of full circle if we can see what you do as well. And I feel like the time that is invested is worth it and the insight.
Scott, the other thing, excuse me, is that I've already established sort of that foundational piece with things you see me report on for city website. We have Google Analytics for the bigwoodeventcenter.com. I can monitor the Facebook interaction and engagement. And then I also claim the Big Wood Event Center space on Google. So I've added photos, I check reviews. So that's, the foundation is set, and we can measure growth as this proceeds.
Well, and I'm sure that for our own use, whether we used you guys or not, we'd still be keeping track of how many proposals we were writing and whether they were getting more or less. I mean, we would be looking at that stuff. And so to the degree that there's any, you know, added increment of effort, I guess is maybe what I was looking for. It doesn't look like it would be a lot. And so.
No, hopefully, I mean, my hope honestly is just to be a good partner so that all of those things can be in one spot. And I kind of can, you know, hold, you know, we can hold each other accountable as far as, all right, let's make sure that we're taking a look at these numbers, and we're not just documenting them, but we're reviewing them and talking about what it means and where we want to go. So it's more than just keeping track of them, but it is discussing them on a regular basis.
Okay. Two other things.
Jim, let Jim have a go.
Maybe I missed it, but I didn't hear a price.
Oh, no, I didn't give a price. Drum roll, please. So for the, the display ads, we're looking at an investment about $500 per month. And for the search engine marketing ads, we're looking at an investment of $725 per month. And you can go up from there.
One of the details was the radius of 20 miles that you mentioned. And maybe that's common in this particular arena as far as the type of work that it would involve. But it seems to me that we're competing with other places that are farther away than that, Alexandria, the city's Fargo-Moorhead. And it seems like that radius ought to be bigger than 20 miles. So maybe there's a reason why that number was chosen, but it seems to me that seems, that seems kind of a small circle to be shooting in.
Yeah. And so I believe when we originally met, it was, that was what our main discussion was, was just to really, as the first step is to really own our own backyard. And so with the investment that we're proposing is we really want to increase our best opportunity for growth, which would be in the 20-mile radius. And then from there, I think there is greater opportunity to grow and to increase the geography. And all of that comes from those discussion at the reporting meetings. But for the first step, it was really trying to make sure that the people of Fergus Falls in this 20-mile radius area really understand what the opportunity is, and then grow from there.
And a reminder that that 20-mile radius, that is reflective of.
Just us. Yep.
Obviously, with broadcast, we reach far beyond that 20-mile radius, and we can have influence in those other markets.
The other thing I would add is that when R-Development was promoting and marketing and selling the Big Wood, they obviously owned the hotel as well. So their focus was really on what business can we bring to the Big Wood that also brings hotel revenue? So they sort of had this concentric circle where they leapfrog over the 20-mile radius from investment and time so that they could reach that prospect who is most likely to stay overnight. So I do think that there's sort of this local well of.
Opportunity.
Of opportunity. Thank you, yeah.
Al, you had a question?
You know, the 20 miles, what would be a price difference between 20 miles and 55 miles or 60 miles, I guess is my question, because, you know, everybody who basically is in Fergus Falls knows about the Big Wood Event Center. People in Elizabeth would know about it. People in Air Hard would know about it. You know, I think we need, if you're going to do this, I think you're going to have to look at Fargo, Alexandria, and some of these other communities that are larger, and get some of that money up here. I guess that's where I'm at with that.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great question. So there's two parts, two ways that I want to answer that. The first one would be, we would do research on what the cost would be. So how that works is we can take a look at, based on the people that we want to get in front of. So like I said, people of a certain age demographic, people who are searching for event venues, people who are, you know, administrative assistants, whatever those groups of people are. And then the geography that we want to get in front of. And then we'll say, all right, we can, there's 100,000 available impressions. We want to make sure that the budget and the recommendation for us is to purchase an appropriate amount of impressions. You don't want to purchase 2,000 impressions when there's 100,000 available. Your message becomes very watered down. So when you talk about, like, would there be an increase in price potentially? If you create a larger, you know, geographic area that you want to get in front of, you can increase the price, or you can become more targeted with the people you want to get in front of. So we could maybe cut back and be more specific on the people we want to target. And so we're kind of reducing that pool. The thing that we want to make sure to do is use the money effectively so that we're creating enough frequency. Because essentially, would you like to tell, you know, 1,000 people something one time, or would you like to tell 100 people something 10 times? Right? And so it's making sure that you have that frequency. The next part of that question was talking about, like, you know, everybody knows who Big Wood is. And I had had a discussion with a coworker before, and I said, I know I'm wrong, but talking about Alexandria, I said, everybody knows Fat Daddies. Everybody knows, you know, the bowling alley. Everybody knows the Broadway Ballroom. Everybody knows about that. So why should we advertise? And the thing is, everybody knows about Fat Daddies in the Alexandria area. But when they are deciding what we're going to do tonight, you want to make sure you show up in search. You want to make sure you show up in those Yellow Pages. Because if people know who you are, that's fantastic, because then you have a better opportunity to get them to click on you when they search for you. So even though people know who you are, are they thinking about you at the time when they're making the decision? And so that's why we just need to make sure that we are showing up when they're making those decisions.
I think though, too, is, you know, if somebody's going to look at a wedding venue or a 50th anniversary party or graduation type of, you know, they know those event centers. They know these things, I would think, especially around here. And I don't know what the, you know, as far as the past history since the first part of, let's say, January to now, what's been going on at the Big Wood. You know, what has happened? What is it projected to do? And when you talk about narrowing your focus to different groups, I understand that. But what I was asking was apples to apples. Okay, you know, what would it cost if you do the same amount at 20-mile radius to a 60-mile radius? You know, what is that going to be? I understand targeting different markets.
Sure. So it really depends on population. So if you're going to add Fargo, or if you're going to add Wapperton, again, it would be different. But I mean, if you're going to go 20-mile radius and then a 40-mile radius, probably going to be about double, you know? So it just, but it depends like on.
That was my question.
Okay, sorry. I mean, we're complicated.
No, I'm not a real complicated fellow.
Maybe the other question, and then we should wrap it up, because we've got a lot of things to kind of talk about this morning. But how do you see the quid pro quo piece working?
In what respect exactly?
I mean, you're looking that you would get to use the Big Wood Center, and then we wouldn't charge you, and in return, in return, you would hold events there?
Based on availability.
Yep.
Exactly right.
And then how do you calculate those dollars?
We obviously have calculated the value of what we're recommending.
Yep.
And then we would in turn have that size of credit, if you will, at the Big Wood. And then the onus is on us to schedule events.
Right. Right. Well, last question, then we're done.
Quick comment. In your presentation, the Big Wood Event Center is abbreviated BWEC, but Big Wood is one word. So I would recommend you BEC. Take the W. It's a person.
I actually think Big Wood. I mean, I think it's known as Big Wood. The logo says Big Wood. It doesn't say W. It's not an anagram. So.
Take out the W, that's all.
Coming, coming back to branding, so.
People will put it in their search engine all sorts of wrong ways. So we'll, we'll own all of them.
Yeah, we'll own all of them, exactly.
Right. I think, thank you. I think this conversation could go on for a long time, and maybe we have to kind of think about it and then come back to staff with some additional questions for clarification, I think. I'm not sure we answered any question. I think we created more questions than answers.
We're a bit happy to answer any that come up.
I think the most important thing is we'll talk about it at the Tax Levy Committee in Tennessee, where we're at for the budget-wise and how we're going to do it. And that's kind of why we wanted to bring it in front of everybody, to just see what, what direction we're going to end up going with this.
I think it's sort of like a $16,000 to $20,000 impact.
Right.
But if you think about that, then, you know, how many weddings do you have to close to cover that? Yeah, because every lead has a, you know, every lead that's going to come in is going to have a price tag, whether you close them or not.
And I would agree. I think part of it is that people have forgot that facilities like that exist as such. So, right, thank, thank you, Doug, Holly. We will move on to Lake Alice grit chambers and call upon Clara Beck.
Good morning. So as you will, oh, jeez. As you will recall, the city is the recipient of a grant from the outdoor Lizard Seance Outdoor Heritage Council in the amount of $500,000 to put in two grit chambers surrounding Lake Alice with the attempt being to remove things like phosphorus from getting into the waters, and then ultimately bettering the health of our entire watershed area. So while I was out on maternity leave, when the grant was going back and forth between the committee who was making the decision and then the city answering questions, in order to get the full $500,000, what the committee asked is, could the city offer leveraged funds to help close the gap between what the council would be offering and then the amount of the actual project, which is $686,000? So to make up that in-between amount between the 500,000 and the 686, there were some discussions about using the sewer fund, the enterprise fund, sewer and water enterprise fund. And so there is a, an amount set aside in the capital improvements plan that could help close this gap. So the request of you guys is to send this on Monday to the council meeting to do three different things. First would be to accept the use of those leveraged funds. Second would be to enter into the grant contract agreement. And then third would be to initiate the public improvement project so that our engineering staff can start working on getting the project going. We are slated to be in the design phase in September. So that is what your, my request is.
Any questions, Clara? I think it's a good project. On Lake Alice. Okay. Scott, would someone like to second that? Scott, or Jim? So Jim got his hand up first. Scott, you had a question?
This is maybe a detailed question, but that, as people around Lake Alice talk to me about what's going on there, they wonder what this is. It's not so much, they're not asking about what it costs or, they're just wondering, what is this?
What is a grit chamber?
What is this project? And I've tried to guess at what it would be and hopefully not give any bad answers. But it would be helpful to have some brief discretion of just what, what is this? What would it, what would it mean? Are we ripping up streets? Are we putting something in the lake or next to the lake or up the street? Or just, that's kind of where the questions have been for me.
Okay, yes. How about Monday, I can bring either like pictures and explain a little bit more about what that looks like.
It's basically, the watershed district that goes into Lake Alice comes all the way from the Kirkbride, and basically flows into obviously the north end of, of Lake Alice. And when we had discussions with the DNR, that, one of the inhibitors for kind of getting any DNR funding for Lake Alice, is that we haven't done anything to remediate any of the kind of the pollution going into the lake. And the grit chambers would sit, in the last design I saw, was in the north edge of Lake Alice, and they are literally, they're like a sewer tank, and so the stormwater would flow into one chamber, and then it would settle out. And then obviously, the, any of the, any of the kind of, basically, the lawn grass mowings, the leaves, and any of the grit that comes off vehicles, you know, both in the summer and the winter from salt, would then settle in those pits, and then clean water would travel over into Lake Alice. So yes, there would be some construction in, in the roads, and there would probably be some diversion of some of the storm drains, so to have that water go into those receptacles, and then flow into Lake Alice. And then, because one of the other things that the DNR had looked at was actually sectioning off like the very northern edge of Lake Alice, and putting in reed beds as an additional filter program for that, for that lake. But we can probably get a map and.
Yeah, I can bring some, some visuals, and we can have a.
So basically, we can bring this to council, and obviously, we'll not put it on the consent agenda, if we're gonna have that discussion on Monday.
And I said Monday, but it's, our meeting's on Tuesday.
Okay, Tuesday.
To be clear.
Thank you.
I must have seen the same information that you did, because as I've tried to describe it to people, as a large septic system, I don't think I was off track, but I thought it would be helpful to be able to show people that, you know, larger scale like this.
So I, I think we can, do you want to take a vote on that? Or is it just? Just, we've got a motion.
We had a motion already.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion is approved. Call upon Len Taylor, who's gonna be up there for the next couple of items, the landfill compactor, and refuge truck.
Good morning, thank you. Yeah, a couple garbage business items here. First one, stationary compactor, the one that's in use out at the landfill, has been there for 33 years. It was moved from the old demolition site up in the northwest corner of the property, down to its current location. And, yeah, so it's 33 years of sitting outside, thousands and thousands of cycles of that compactor. It's wore out, so we need a new one. The company that we're recommending to purchase one from is from DMH Companies from New Hope, Minnesota. Purchase price would be $58,936.90. And as noted in the memo, we could reduce that if we do some of the demo of the current unit, so. The funds would come from the refuse fund, and talk that over with Sandy and Bill, and there's sufficient funds in that fund for the purchase.
Somebody care to make that motion? Thank you, Jim. Somebody care to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott, as in Rachel's. Any questions of Len on a compactor?
Seems we've had good use of the other one.
Yeah, it's been pretty trouble-free. Just lately, there's been some maintenance issues going on, just wearing out.
We'll put that on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, the motion is approved to go on the consent agenda. The next item is the refuge truck, a little bit more spendy.
A little bit, yes. So unit 216 is scheduled to be replaced, and this truck, 216, right now is the commercial recycling truck, so it's a rear-load compactor truck. And it's just a regular cycled replacement. We, we found that if we cycle them through on a regular basis, our value for trade-in is much greater, and our maintenance issues, we don't see them at this interval. It's after six and seven years of service that they start getting to be pretty costly, nickel-and-dimeyous in maintenance and repairs. So this purchase from Olympic Sales would be $245,178.90, minus the trade-in of $45,300, so a total purchase price of $199,878.90, from the equipment fund from the 2025 budget.
Would somebody care to make that motion? Thank you, Jim. Can I second it? Thank you, Scott, Rachel's. Any questions of Len? I suppose that one question I have, what's the delivery timeframe look like?
The compactor would be about 12 to 14 weeks, sorry, I didn't mention that. And the truck, we're thinking about six months. Yeah, they're.
So that would be next year.
It will be.
Expenditure. All those, do you have a question?
Just another detail, this is, you said it's a rear one, so it's not for the residential ones that dump in the side of the truck, this is for the larger ones that dump in the back of the.
Right, it's for the commercial recycling, so for the three in the six-yard dumpsters.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Hearing none, motion is approved to go on the consent agenda. There are some additional items, as Clara pointed out, it is not Monday, but Tuesday, that we will meet again, so.
Anthony, before you get into that, I got some, I wanted to bring up something else that we've been trying to talk about for about the last three months, and I haven't been able to do it.
I don't know, then, in that case.
You don't know nothing, I didn't tell you.
So therefore, it's not.
I don't know either.
Bill, the only ones that know is, is Brian and Guy. I talked about street closures, we were talking about that back in May, I believe, and maybe it was before that, about South Union, last block of South Union, and then the block, the road behind the city garage on Peck Street. And the reason I bring it up now is because after this nasty rainstorm, we're gonna spend a bunch of time on that South Union road, because it's all washed out, I mean, it's just, it's destroyed again. I think this is the second time this year they've had to really get after it. And we've, you know, it's really just kind of a pass-through road, there's nobody lives on it, it's, half of it is, belonged to Buse Township, I believe, and the other half belongs to a couple residents that they'll have, they have access other ways. And so we've talked about this with Brian, I think we just need to maybe, and then with the, with the road, the other road out behind the city garage, that's another one, that's just a pass-through road for, it serves really nobody except for us, and it's kind of a nuisance most times, and in the wintertime, it's a nuisance, because the trucks are going in and out trying to haul snow, and people are, it's just kind of, it's not a necessary road, and I don't know if there's a feasibility, what we need to know, but I think we should bring it forward to Brian to, to check this out, and see what's, what's costing us now, and what it's gonna save us, and it would be kind of nice to know.
So you're looking to make a motion to ask city staff to look at those.
Exactly right. And I've talked to Brian about it, and Guy about it. And I apologize for not bringing it to you earlier, Anthony, I didn't know you were gonna be sitting there today.
Thank you.
Apology accepted, Scott. Would somebody care to second that? Oh, thank you, Laura. I was gonna say, otherwise, you would have died for lack of a second.
That would have been really sad.
You're welcome.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Motion is approved to ask city staff to look into it. Now, are you fine?
There you go. Have at it.
Well, ask, as Clara mentioned, we will not be meeting on Monday, but Tuesday, and therefore, obviously, the city garbage and recycling collections that would typically take place on Monday and Tuesday, will now take place on Tuesday and Wednesday. Obviously, city council meeting will be Tuesday the 3rd, and then the next meeting with the committee of the whole will be September the 11th. Unless anybody has anything else they would like to discuss this morning, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
There you go.